Like to call a meeting to order. First order of business is roll call.
Tom Silveria.
Here.
Chris Souza.
Here.
Tom Heaney.
Here.
Jim Miller.
Here.
Dave Hontoon.
Here.
Andy Bacon.
Here.
Absent is Olin Gambrell and Eric Curtin.
Tonight, Mr. Hontoon and Mr. Bacon will be voting. Next order of business is adoption of the minutes from August 27th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Can I approve stuff if I wasn't here?
You can make a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Chris Souza. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries five zero. Mr. Kane, order of business. You want me to read through everything or?
Yeah, just see whether folks want to continue or if they're prepared to go forward tonight.
Do you remember how we do that? Read both some of them? Yeah.
Just state the applicant's name and the address of the property.
Mary M. Vidalah, 120 Seaside Avenue.
We're here.
Are you prepared to go forward tonight?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Matthew T. Marcelo and Paula C. Marcelo, 443 Purgatory Road.
Dear for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Silve. Go on to the full hearing. Yep, go on.
Okay, full hearings. Atlantic Beach Suites, 42 through 44 and 56 Wave Avenue.
That matter may be continued?
May or?
I'm requesting a continuance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I thought that was optional when you said may. To the October?
To the October meeting, please. The engineer is trying to run some additional calculations due to some issues raised by the opposition, and it could necessitate in requirement to re-advertise the matter. I will just also advise the board, in October, I'm not entirely sure of my availability. I'm supposed to have a trial starting in federal court the week of the 23rd, so it's possible that I may not be available for that hearing. But at this point, we can put it down for October, and I will certainly alert everyone well in advance.
10:22 is the date. Thank you, Mr. You.
Thank you.
Martland, we're going to continue that to 10:22, and you'll let us know.
Atlantic Beach Suites LLC, 28 Equidnic Avenue.
Yes, that matter is being referred for development plan review and may be continued to the October meeting.
Okay, we'll refer that over as well.
West Main Road Limited Liability Company and Casey Smith, 102 West Main Road.
Yep, I received a letter from that petitioner. They were before the board last month. Board requested that they do a little bit of housekeeping, so to speak, and that has not been accomplished as of today, so they are requesting a continuance for October 22nd to give them a little more time.
Okay, we're going to continue that to 10:22 as well.
Petition of Equidnic Avenue Equities Limited Liability Company and the Carp Patino Group Limited Liability Company, 850 Equidnic Avenue.
Yes, David Martland, I'm still with Thomas Martland in Offenburg. I request that this matter be continued one month. I believe after, in consultation with the building official, we might be submitting an amended petition, and I'm not certain whether or not that will have to be re-advertized, but we're going to work that out.
Okay, so we're going to continue that to 10:22.
Maureen Donovan and Brian and Ann Donovan, 0 Tuckerman Avenue.
Uh, that's ready.
Okay, we'll put you on the count.
Hey, Joe?
Yes.
That's what I have to recuse myself for, a little bit of butter. It's the second time you've heard this. Do we have enough votes here?
You're in a butter down on Tuckerman?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have enough votes, so you can recuse.
Everyone else was here for the first one?
This is a new petition.
Oh, okay, all right.
William J. Flynn, 6 Holland Avenue.
Are you prepared?
Yep.
Get ready.
John and Mary Ann Emanuel, 68 Crest Street. Brian T. Holland and Carrie Holland, 8 Tuckerman Avenue. Francine Newth, 39 Continental Drive.
Ready.
Okay.
Thomas McGrath, 299 Elephant Lane. Samuel's Realty Company Incorporated and South Coast Health Systems Incorporated, 678 Equidnic Avenue.
Good evening, Gerard Galvin for the petitioner. I'd like to request a continuance to 10:22 for that matter.
Okay, will do. Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
Exit Strategy Limited Liability Company, 991 and 995 West Main Road.
Mr. Chairman, you have two applications presented to the board, one for variance and the other is for special use permit as well as development plan review. It has been forwarded to the planning board for development plan review, so that case would need to be put over to October 22nd.
This is the Exit Strategy?
Yes.
It has two petitions.
Okay. We'll carry that to 10:22.
William J. and Elizabeth Gill, 1669 West Main Road.
Uh, that matter is ready.
Okay.
I almost believe there was one matter not called out on the floor.
Yeah, that's what's messed me up. Yeah, we have to go back to Joe. Sorry about that. Is that one ready to go forward, Mr.?
Uh, yes, the petition of J O J F LLC, that is ready as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. Give me one second here. Three seconds. No, we're going to do the summary cases first. The first two cases that we're going to hear tonight are what we consider summary cases. They have minimal relief required. We're going to read off the petitions, and then I'm going to ask if anyone in the audience is here to speak against the petition. If they are, then we're going to continue it to a full hearing. If there's no opposition, we're going to vote on both cases together as a slate and approve them together. So I'm going to ask Mr. Heaney to read the first case into the record.
Petition of Mary M. Vidalah, owner for variance from sections 603, 701, and 803G to construct a seven-foot-by-41-foot deck addition with a left side setback of eight feet where 15 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 120 Seaside Avenue and further identified as Lot 78 on Tax Assessor's Platte, 115 Southeast.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against that petition? Okay, read it.
I don't know how this works because I've never done it before, but I called today, but I ended in touch with our next door neighbor who did have some issues, and so we kind of negotiated a phone and did some revisions, and I have a new, whoever I spoke to suggested that if I get a new official plan, I should bring it, have enough practice to show people. I just, I don't know quite how to.
So, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be?
Continue to a full hearing.
Yeah, here the other summary case, if you can grab a seat, and then you will hold a public hearing, and you can, uh, think you can add those revisions.
Okay, thank you.
Second one?
Petition of Matthew T. Marcelo and Paula C. Marcelo, owners by their attorney, Sean Bouchard Esquire, for a variance from section 603 and 701 and 803G to allow the enlargement of an existing non-conforming residential structure by the construction of a 200-square-foot second-floor addition with a rear yard setback of 27 feet where 50 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 433 Purgatory Road and further identified as Lot 114 on Tax Assessor's Platte, 122.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against this petition? Seeing none, we're going to carry that as a summary case. Can I have a motion to accept the single summary case? We're going to continue the first case to a full hearing.
Motion approved.
All those in favor? Oh, I need a second. Second, Mr. Heaney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five zero. Mr. Kane, where should we put this other summary hearing? Should we start off with that?
It's usually placed on the agenda at the board's discretion, so.
We're going to start with that one then.
It sounds like the applicant just wants to submit amended plan.
Okay, so we're going to go into our full hearings, and we're going to start with that summary case. It's now a full hearing. So can you read that case in again?
Petition of Mary M. Vidalah, owner for a variance from sections 603, 701, and 803G to construct the 70, to construct a seven-foot-by-41-foot deck addition with a left side setback of eight feet where 15 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 120 Seaside Avenue and further identified as Lot 78 on Tax Assessor's Platte, 115 Southeast.
Are you Ms. Vidalah?
I am.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony tonight would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Mary Vidalah, 120 Seaside Avenue, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Tell us about your amended petition.
So, we made it a little smaller. The neighbors felt that it sort of looked into their yard and affected their privacy. We didn't know this until late last night, and so we've sort of scrambled around today to try to address their concerns just because, you know, we wanted to be good neighbors. So, we sent them this new plan. They wanted to be able to come down and look at the, look at it. So, what we, there's an existing, so the porch that we have now is leaking and getting the framing of the house wet, so I was really trying to do this in a timely fashion. It's a little frustrating that I didn't hear about the objections until last night. So what, and I don't know if this is even possible, what my husband and I discussed with the neighbors is presenting this and seeing if we can have it approved, but then if the neighbors get down and, you know, next weekend and are dissatisfied, we would just make it a little smaller. So I don't know how that works. You know, I assume, I assume if you get an approval and then it gets smaller, I don't know if it has to be re.
I don't.
You're always allowed to build less than your approval for.
So that's what we're suggesting, is that we present this and see if we can get it approved, and then potentially, if the neighbors still have objections, if anything, we would just make it a little smaller.
Okay, can you?
I would want you to present the change.
Okay, so should I just give it to?
Yep, we're going to list, I'm going to make it Exhibit A. So we're going to mark this Exhibit A, and then you just. Yeah, I got it. You can go back.
You accommodated your neighbor. How come they weren't able to come tonight to put this to bed?
Uh, they are out of state.
They're out of state. Do they live in town?
Pardon me?
They live here?
No, they live in the Boston area, so they weren't able to come down.
Do you live here full-time?
No, I don't. I live in the Boston area also.
Just curious.
Well, it's nice of you to accommodate your neighbors.
They're new neighbors. We want to start off on the right foot.
Any questions for the petitioner?
So it looks like you reduced the size by about, almost half it looks like?
Yeah. There's an existing porch there. We're just trying to make it a little bit bigger. But yeah, we just sort of lobbed off the part in the back that would look into their yard because our house is on a hill and it does sort of look down.
Mr. Chairman, one issue that I see with the plan that's been proposed, well, the deck is considerably smaller. The, it is closer to the rear property line than was advertised. It was advertised with a setback of eight feet, and now you're down to a setback of seven feet forward. So you can ask for less relief, but you can't get more without leaving notice to all the butters to re-advertise.
So you mean to make that, that little bit wider? It's the side, so it's just.
Yeah, but because you're going, requesting to allow it to be eight feet from the rear property line, and now you're proposing that it be actually closer than that.
Yeah, I guess we made it six inches wider since we were making it so much shorter.
Which you could do, but that would have to be re-advertized and re-noticed because you're asking for a smaller setback. You're asking for more relief than was originally advertised. You can always, you can come and ask for less relief, but if you ask for more relief on any of the dimensions, it has to be re-advertized.
I didn't realize it was for each dimension.
Yeah.
Mr. Kane, does a summary case exist because there were no buddy neighbors protesting?
Well, there's not, they're asking for relief just on one side of less than half the required setback.
All right, so this would, this puts it over. This wouldn't have been a summary case as we're looking at it?
No, as you're looking at it, you would be seven and a half. So if it was seven and a half feet from the property line, it's the limit. Now, there's seven foot four, so.
That was supposed to be seven.
But what was advertised was eight feet, so you can't go less than eight feet.
Right, and this kicks it out of the summary category anyway, but we're out. Do you want to amend your?
What I think you and I had discussed when I came to ask you about it was that up to 18 inches, it was sort of the more, you know, from what we had, was the more, was the more simple version.
Required setback to 50, as long as you weren't any closer than seven and a half feet.
So that's what.
You're at seven foot four and seven eighths, that.
That's not, I'm not sure why I did it that way. Because we were, what we were attempting to do.
If you stay at this at seven and a half feet, it would still fall under the guidelines for a summary. However, they already took you off the calendar and put it for a full hearing, so that's sort of a moot point then. And it would have to be re-advertized because the notice went out with eight feet, and you can't go less than that. Right. My recommendation would be to hear the original petition. Before you build anything, show it to your neighbors. If they're unhappy with it, then file an amended petition because either way, this configuration's going to require any advertisement.
Okay, so if I had come with it still seven feet wide but just shorter, that would have been?
It's a distance from the back.
It's the side, but, okay.
From that side.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't be, advertised eight feet, and now you're presenting something that's closer than eight feet. And it's also too close at this stage for us to have a summary case. So we should disregard this?
Well, it's up to the applicant what she wants to do because you're on rock, and if you want to go with this is to continue it to next month and have it re-advertized and re-noticed.
You understand you could keep your original petition. It's a summary case. It would likely, it would, am I allowed to say it would likely?
It's not a summary case.
It's not a summary case. We moved it to a full hearing, so it's a full hearing. Did we move it back to a summary? No. We can. No. It doesn't matter. It can still. We can still approve it contingent. You can approve it the way you brought it in. Make it shorter, but you can't make it.
You could hear the case and then make a decision based on the evidence.
Right. But her best option is to present it the original way.
It's up to her what her best option is.
So if I presented it the original way, and then we just made it shorter in length? So?
You'd be okay.
And then if, if we really wanted to come back for that extra six inches?
You could re-advertise.
Widthwise, we could redo it. Okay, so then let's do that. Let's, let's base it on the original.
Exhibit A is being pulled.
Sorry, I've never done this before.
I have no further questions for the applicant. I'm going to close, I'm going to ask if anyone wants to talk, but you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against? Come on. Raise your right hand, please. State, do you swear the testimony tonight would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Tim O'Brien, 118 Seaside Ave., Middletown. And I've been in touch with the applicant kind of over the last couple of days about the original plan, and we expressed that we're very much opposed to the original plan, and we're trying to work out a compromise, and I think we just ran out of time before today's meeting. So, I don't know if you're moving forward on the original plan, but if you are, we're absolutely opposed to the original plan as submitted.
Is this a different neighbor?
No, I see a right-hand man.
I just got a second draft.
Tim, just to clarify what, what I just said about the original plan is that that's one, if they would be able to approve, that we would go back to you and make it the size that you're comfortable with. I wasn't ever planning to actually go ahead and do the original plan as we were discussing sort of mechanics of how this process works. So just, just to be clear about that, we, I made very clear to this committee that we intend to work with you and not do anything unless we agree. Just want that picture.
Were you here for that? When she came in, the first thing she said was, I'm going to work out a compromise.
Yeah, and I wasn't here for that, actually. I just came in towards the end.
The first thing she said is, I want to make a compromise with my neighbor.
And we're looking to work with them. And as I said to them earlier, I said, I just want to see it in advance before I approve something. And so, we just didn't get time to do that.
Perhaps it'd be an opportunity to hold this matter for a while and allow the two neighbors to talk with each other and see if they can reach a resolution.
Why don't you go out in the other room, and we'll hold it to the end. If you come back and want to continue, we continue it, or we can put it to a vote, but you can go, feel free to use the lobby.
Okay.
Petition of Maureen Donovan, owner, and Brian and Ann Donovan, applicant, by their attorney, David P. Martland Esquire, for a variance from sections 603 and 701 to construct a three-story, single-family dwelling with a left side setback of five feet where 15 is required, a front setback of 15 feet where 25 is required, and a lot coverage of 29.9% where 25% is allowed. Said real estate is located on 0 Tuckerman Ave. It further identified as Lot 107 on Tax Assessor's Platte, 116 Northeast.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself. Okay. Mr. Silve, you're going to be voting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Martland, on behalf of the owner as an applicant, with respect to this petition. This is a matter that I think the board is familiar with. There had been a prior petition filed by my clients in connection with this property. That petition had been amended during the course of the hearings and was ultimately denied by the board. I have since met with the Donovans, you know, discussed this matter. They've gone back to the drawing board and made some substantial changes to their plans, and we have filed this current application with the board. Again, as the board's aware, we're requesting variances for the left side yard, the front yard, and lot coverage. Now, this property's on Tuckerman Avenue. Like many of the properties on Tuckerman Avenue, you've got some pretty small lots which create hardships for owners because it constrains the footprint that you can have. And so we've, the Donovans have spent some time going back, looking at their plans, and seeing how they could address the concerns raised by the board while still having a reasonable-sized home but asking for the minimal relief. As I think the board was concerned whether or not they were requesting the minimal relief the last time. I've got with me this evening Anna Donovan, who was here to present some testimony. Her husband, Brian, is here as well, as well as Brian's mom, Maureen Donovan. It's her property. Brian and Anna want to build a home, locate their family here, and be residents of Middletown. And so what we want to present tonight, and I know you've heard this before, but you've essentially got a lot that is undersized, it's narrow, and that is what creates the hardship. And what we'll do is we can walk you through what had been originally submitted, what it had been revised to, and what we're proposing this evening. So if I call Anna to testify.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony tonight would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Anna Donovan, 4 Clark Hill Drive, Northeastern Mass.
Thank you. Anna, could you explain to the, to the board what you're trying to do with building a home on this particular property?
Yes, so.
So if you could just speak into the microphone.
Yes, so my husband and I, we have two young boys, three, and almost a year old. And we currently live in Easton, Massachusetts, but my husband owns a landscaping company down here. He basically grew up here. Maureen, my mother-in-law, has owned the property for 38 years, and that's directly in front of this lot. So her home is there right now on the esplanade. And we have the opportunity to move our family here, all four of us and our dog, and build a house, and we would be full-time residents here. We would build our business here. My husband has been trimming hedges for, since forever down here. So we, we just want, we have this opportunity to build a home, and we, you know, have the two children now, and so we're looking to build what we think is a reasonably-sized home on this narrow lot. So we've started, and we've been trimming and trimming, and we hope that we can appease the board at this point with what we're looking to have. We've done, based on the feedback from the last time we presented, which was cutting the decks and trying to cut just the overall size of the home. We have gone and done that.
If I could just interrupt for just a moment. So you've created sort of a spreadsheet of what the first version was, the second version that was amended, and what we're here tonight. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And this would be that document?
It is.
If I may approach the board and provide, provide this as Exhibit A. Now, Anna, could you just go through this spreadsheet, column one? That version one, that was the initial proposal, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and what was the overall footprint with the overhang?
1692.
And that resulted in lot coverage of 34.7%. The side, you, at that point, you were seeking relief from both side yards, correct? It would have been seven feet to the building on the right and seven feet on the left, and you were also looking to be seven feet from the road on the front yard setback, correct? During the course of that hearing, there were certain objections or concerns raised by the board, so you ended up reducing that. And that, that is what is set forth in that second column, which is version two?
Correct.
And that ultimately got rejected. And that ultimately got rejected, uh, by the board, is that right?
Yes.
And this evening, we had filed a petition, which is that third column, version three. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, and that was showing, uh, lot coverage of twenty-nine point nine-nine percent, or you've, you've indicated here thirty percent, is that right?
Yes.
Since then, you, you picked up an error in those calculations, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and could you please explain what that error is?
Yes, it didn't change any of the dwelling size at all, but we had, in the site plan that you see before you, uh, we had the roof overhang extending over the deck, which, in fact, this time around, based on the feedback from last time from the board, to uncover the third-floor deck, we have opened that up. So we actually removed that extra square footage, so you'll see to the far right on the exhibit is twenty-nine point one percent, which includes overhangs, and that is the actual, um, site plan that we have. And we have copies, if you wanna see that too, if it makes more sense.
If I, if I could, uh, present this to the board, this sort of amended site plan I blew up, so we could see it sounding, the rear is an elimination of the roof overhang extending past people.
We're gonna label that exhibit the amended site plan?
And so this evening, we would be, I guess, requesting a, uh, some lesser relief associated with the lot coverage. So instead of requesting relief of twenty-nine point nine-nine percent, the request this evening is for twenty-nine point one percent. Now, could you explain what the differences are between the petition that was rejected by, by the board and what's before the board this evening? What, what, what did you do to, to reduce what you were seeking?
So, based on the feedback, we went back and tried to just trim as much as we could even further, um, and kind of just shrink the house down, um, while keeping the same, um, interior setup, um, of bedrooms and bathrooms. So, uh, we were able to trim kind of one foot, oh, I'm, on the bottom, I'll start, we did two and a half feet from the length of the structure, um, and we additionally took off two feet of the width of the deck. So where we had ten, we now have eight feet of deck as well. And we were able to trim one foot out of the width to tr, to make it a, a little bit more narrow as well.
And what did that result in from a, uh, reduction of, uh, square footage of living area?
Living area was, it reduced it two hundred and forty-seven square feet of the interior down. And out of the deck space, um, we removed on the first floor entirely the whole deck on the first floor. Um, so we'll just have a patio there, and we also uncovered on the third floor the deck, um, based on the feedback. So we removed, um, over three hundred square feet of decking as well.
So, you initially, in, in, in the prior petition, you had, uh, one thousand six hundred and ninety-two, uh, square feet of, uh, footprint and, and roof overhang, and you've reduced that down to, uh, fourteen hundred and seventeen square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
You also, uh, were able to increase the, uh, the left-side yard setback by one foot, is that right?
Yes.
By reducing the, the width. And you were able to, um, both reduce the length of the, the, the structure as well as push it back further, is that right?
Yeah, that was another concern we heard last time, was just pushing it back so that our back met up with that thirty-foot line, so we did that as well.
And so, so that resulted in going from a, uh, a building setback to the front yard of, of eight feet, and you increased that to, to fifteen feet.
Yes, correct.
And would it be your testimony that this is, after going through, through all of this, really the least relief that, that you need to, to have a reasonable-sized, uh, home for you and your family?
I do feel that way. We, you know, we went in and we kind of were trimming, you know, inches off of rooms and, and trying to shrink it as much as we could, um, without having to completely, um, redesign it. The house essentially, which you'll see, um, even with the floor plans, it's, it's pretty much twenty feet wide. Um, we do need a garage, we have two boys now, and we have, we're gonna have a lot of surfboards and bikes, so we really wanted to keep that. Um, but it's essentially twenty feet wide with a side staircase that goes up. So the, the widest the house is, is twenty-nine feet, but the top floors are actually twenty, um, the second and third stories. Um, and so that allows us to keep, you know, we have four bedrooms in the home, um, there's nothing crazy in the house, it's a open floor plan, second floor, main living area, two bedrooms on the first floor and two bedrooms on the third floor.
I don't have any, uh, further questions. Well, actually, just, just a couple, I'm sorry. Now, you're familiar with the area there, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And, and you've tried to design a home that would be in keeping with, with the style of homes that are located?
Absolutely, yes, yeah, um, especially for the neighborhood, um, it's gonna be kind of a modern Cape-style home. We're doing, hopefully, um, you know, natural red cedar shingles, um, we're having, you know, high-end amenities, we're gonna make it beautiful. This has been a dream of ours to be able to build a home like this here. Um, and, like you said, we have a family landscaping company, so it'll be all professionally done and maintained. Um, so we're looking forward to really being a part of the neighborhood and, and making it more beautiful. Right now, there's a small shed there, um, garage, so we'd be replacing that, um, with this home.
And, and, and part of the, the lot coverage request emanates to a certain extent from the, the roof overhangs, which are, are done to provide a home that is more aesthetically pleasing.
Correct.
Is that right? And in keeping with the homes in, in the area?
Yes, our footprint, actually, which you'll see, is, is only twenty-six point seven percent of the lot, as it is now. Um, and the overhangs add that extra to bring it up to twenty-nine point one percent. And I spoke with my architect, and he really didn't suggest removing those, um, just to keep with the aesthetics of the home. He said we could perhaps on two sides, but, um, he didn't suggest it.
I have no further, uh, questions from, uh, Mrs. Donovan.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Um, on the south side, you didn't make any improvement on the, on the side. Says, the original one was six feet. And then, is that correct? One was, the original, is that correct?
Yeah, the original was six feet to the roof. Um, we're now down to, um, we brought it down to four feet, but then we ended up shifting it over to have parking.
If I could just, uh, jump in. The, the original petition sort of, uh, split the, the, uh, the difference and had relief on both sides, both the left and the right. So you had a, a greater, um, you know, setback there. So, the original petition sought relief on left and right side yards. Uh, when the board expressed concern about the amount of relief, the, Donovan shrunk the house down, uh, somewhat, uh, by probably, I think, five feet in, in the width, and, and shifted it by a two feet to the left, thereby, uh, providing the full fifteen feet on the right-hand side. So, there's no setback relief on the right. And the neighbor on, uh, on the, the, the left-hand side has no objection to what's proposed.
But since, yeah, since you heard us last, we were in narrowing the house to that foot, we did give an additional foot on that side.
Yeah, that, the house, there was a five-foot setback the last time, and now it's six feet, so it's slightly larger.
On the south side?
On the south side.
Yes.
Or building, oh, how does the roof become?
Well, you me, you measure from the, the building and not the, the overhang for the setback.
That's fine.
Right? And so, and so the setback, if I could approach?
Well, how, how could it be six feet from the building and five feet from the roof? Oh, I see, okay, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're, you're...
You can have, you're allowed to have...
I understand that.
...one foot of overhang that doesn't count against the setback.
So it's a six-foot, okay, six-foot setback?
Yes.
All right. The roof, I understand, is just for the, it's, I didn't realize they even counted that as lot coverage because it's, the cu, the lot's not covered. But, okay, so you've got six feet from now, and last time you had seven feet, is that correct?
Well, it was originally...
You had five, you had five feet one time, and then six feet, and then seven feet. That's all, that's all I want you to explain to me, that's all.
Yeah, so when they originally filed...
Yep.
They had seven, seven feet...
Okay.
...on the south side, and seven feet on the north side.
Okay.
Okay? They eliminated any requests on the north, um, and now we're at six feet on, on the south.
I didn't have a diagram of, but, sorry, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
I had, I had to get that straight, okay?
Okay.
That's all, okay. So now you're gonna be, you're gonna have six feet from the property line, so that's enough room. And how tall is this structure? Is it three floors?
It is.
It's three floors, I see. And, so you will have...
However, if you, um, look at the plans, the second and third floors are pulled back on that south side, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the first floor is really the widest, um, and then we essentially, there's just a jet out for the stairs, essentially on one side, on the second and third stories. And then, um, and then it kind of cuts in, if you look at the floor plan. There's a deck there, and then it's open on the third story.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And, um, at the last hearing, uh, Mr. Hool had, uh, prepared a report, and I would just like to enter that into...
Okay, we'll call that exhibit C.
...the record, with sort of description of the surrounding area, um, and the general lot coverage that exists there.
And there been no change to this since it was originally presented to us?
That's correct. The, the only change is the reduction of the roof.
Okay. No, I'm in terms of, right?
No, no change.
Yeah. Let me see if anyone would like to speak for or against it. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, at, just one point, um, prior to voting on the petition itself, because the applicant filed a prior petition that was denied within this past year, uh, the board has to first make a finding that this petition that's before you today is materially different than the petition that was...
Do we have to do that with a formal vote?
You should.
Uh, can I have a motion that, uh, expresses that this is a, a significantly different petition than the one we denied two months ago or three months ago?
I'll make a motion that this is a significantly different, uh, building from the two originals, uh, two prior applications that were submitted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Can I have a motion to accept the petition?
I'll make a motion, thank you.
Mr. Silva makes the motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bacon. Discussion?
Jack, I have a question for you, Mr. Kane. Um, there were some issues about people that were against it. And are those still, do they carry over with the new petition?
I believe if they're not here to object this evening, then...
Okay.
This is, this is a different petition.
Okay. The thing that I would like to know is, um, on the front of the property, um, there were some issues about people parking trailers in there, and I know there's a twenty-five foot buffer zone there and everything, and, um, my only concern is that hopefully, um, we don't park anything in that area there besides their own cars.
That'll fall under the town ordinance, correct, Mr. Kane?
Well, the ordinance allows parking on, or off of the roadway, essentially off of the paved surface.
Correct.
So any properly-registered vehicle that's parked on that grass on Tuckerman Ave., technically legally parked, that's according to the Middletown Police. The board can place restrictions, uh, but I don't think that you can place a restriction on anything that's not on the property.
Okay, okay. That's the only thing I want...
There are, there are other ordinances that control number, number and types of vehicles that are parked on the property with regards to trailers, campers, boats, et cetera.
Okay.
So there, there are things in place to control it.
All right. Thank you, Cap.
I have nothing. I'd, I'd like to state my support, uh, for this request for variance. When you look at the documentations and you looked at the machinations that the family has gone through in terms of the numbers of submissions, and the fact that this is a unique submission as compared to the other ones, where they have addressed the concerns, the previous concerns from the former petitions, so I think on this one you can see that they really looked at the unique characteristics of this lot, and they've done the best that they can to conform as much as they can and still get a dwelling that they would like to live in. In addition to that, when you look at the neighborhood, they're building in accordance with the remodeling and the new bu, new construction in the area. So they're, they're keeping, uh, the general character of the surrounding area in mind in building this home, so I will vote to, uh, support this petition.
Any other discussion?
I too am gonna support the petition. I believe it's the least relief necessary for the full enjoyment of the property. I appreciate that the applicant had, had made the corrections, you know, i.e. only asking for relief on one side and moving back the front, uh, to take some of the backyard and put it in the front so that the relief in the front is less than required. So I too am gonna support the petition, based on the fact it's the least relief necessary for the full enjoyment of the property.
I'm also gonna, uh, vote in favor of it because for the same reasons.
Okay.
I am too.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Next petition is William J. Flynn...
For a variance from sections six zero three and seven oh one, to construct a four-hundred-and-eighty-one square foot addition with a right-side yard setback of eleven feet, two inches, where thirty feet is required. Said real estate is located at Six Holland Ave. and further identified as Lot nine zero five on Tax Assessor's Platte, one twenty-five.
Mr. Flynn, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
William J. Flynn, Six Holland Ave., Middletown, Rhode Island.
Tell us about your petition, Mr. Flynn.
Okay, so, um, presently, I have a three-bedroom Cape. We built it thirty-eight years ago, and you know those old traditional capes, the steps going all the way up to the second floor are a little bit tough. So, we've always... the steps going all the way up to the second floor are a little bit tough, so we've always wanted to eventually put a bedroom down on the first floor, we don't have any bedrooms on the first floor, um, and so our petition is to be able to put a bedroom with a bath and a closet on the first floor area where you can see, um, on the, it's, as you look at our property, it's, you know, on the right side looking at the front door. Our problem with our, is our lot, is a hundred and fifty feet in the front and a hundred and twenty in the back, and it kind of runs this way. You can see the, you see the, the lot thing there, and so, you know, the, the best spot for it, um, is, you know, where our driveway really is, and, you know, no garage or anything, so the best spot for it is on that right side, and that's where we have the, you know, closest to the lot line where this property would be. Um, on the left side, uh, we have our air conditioning, outside air conditioning, and we have a propane tank on the left side of the building there, so. Um, and in, if we go to the back, that little piece that's a budding, uh, that you can see that's sticking out there, the little white thing from the, uh, from the property, uh, line here, um, that's our bulkhead, and from that area, that's right through there is where our septic system is. So we really can't, you know, put anything back there, so this was, um, the, the best place to put it as far as how the property, how the building would look, um, and, uh, so that's, that's why we're requesting the relief, so.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
What are the dimensions of the addition itself? It may say here, but my eyeballs aren't working that strong.
I think it says it's four hundred and eighty-one.
So, what's, what's the length and width on that, just curious?
Oh.
Without being too smart.
Eighteen point five by twenty-six.
You can read that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so eighteen by twenty-six?
Okay.
Yeah. We, we came a little bit, our, our, uh, you know, our, our family room is on that same side, so right now, instead of walking in our front door, we've always walked into the side door because that's where we park the cars, so basically we had to extend that, let's call it the breezeway, um, just a little bit to kind of get, so that we can go through that breezeway, because otherwise, you know, we, we have a lot of, uh, you know, old trees up there now, I mean, there's abracadabra, you, my, you can't even, my neighbors can't even see us, um, and so, you know, it's hard getting around it, and so we extended that a couple of feet, I think, right? And then, of course, under all circumstances, I couldn't make it, I mean, any smaller than I made it, I'm still gonna be, need a variance, so.
Right.
It's a good size, it's.
A lot of it's because of the way the house is situated on the property, it's trapezoidal, so it's.
It's, yeah, you know, it's funny, because if you look at the house, you think you're perpendicular to the road, which you are really, but the lot line, because it runs that way.
Right.
It basically makes the house, you know, look like it's sideways, you know, so, um, anyway.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for.
Where you gonna park, so driveway's gonna.
So we're gonna, we're still, we're still gonna park at the front there someplace, I've now gotta, I gotta make a little indenture, um, as you drive in our driveway, there's a, there's a spot I can probably park a car or two in there. The other, the only other way to do it is if I, if I, you know, made a U in front. Again, you know, thirty-eight years ago, my, my, um, well is in the front there, uh, so trying to make that turn with the well makes it a little bit more difficult, so, but, I don't know. At this point, no garage, ever.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So this is just going like up to your driveway, is that correct, or is it taking part of your driveway?
It's taken part of our driveway, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted, I, I, it didn't show the driveway here, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, right, so it's taken part of the driveway.
Okay, so you, you're pushing it forward already.
Yeah, we're pushing it as far forward as we can.
Okay.
And still attach that breezeway, let's say, to the.
That's what I wanted to hear, that you would make, made an effort to bring it forward, so that would, the more forward you bring it, the less relief you need, but if you brought it forward all you can, that's what I wanted.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Let's see if anyone wants to speak for or against it. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chris is, takes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bacon seconds, discussion?
Uh, I'll, I'll just say for the record, I'm gonna support the petition, I think, uh, Mr. Flynn, uh, like many of us in Middletown, have awkward-shaped lots, and infrastructure that was put in prior really precludes anywhere else in the property, so I think the unique characteristics of the lot determine where he's gonna put it, and as Mr. Silva, uh, pointed out, he's made the best of the situation by moving it as far forward on the house as he can, so I'm gonna support the petition. Any other discussion?
I'm also gonna support it, and I think, as noted, it's because, uh, in addition to what was just stated, it's also seeking the least relief necessary in order to make this improvement.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
I agree, you went to the first case and said.
Yeah. We're gonna, I gotta find it, give me a second, it's here. I'll handle it right through there. We're gonna continue Mrs. Vidal's, one twenty Seascape Avenue, Lot one fifteen S E. You're still sworn in, so your testimony.
Okay, great.
Is still under oath?
So we've talked and we're confident that we'll be able to sort of come to some agreement, but we're not ready to go, look for approval tonight, so we just wanted to understand the procedure, he, um, we would like to rethink the, the width, so, um, it seems like it'll need to be re-advertized, um, and then we'll sort of discuss the length.
What you could do is continue this petition and.
Right.
You can submit a new one, we re-advertise it, and then withdraw this at the next meeting.
Okay, so.
That would be the best.
But we'd still be able to present and get it potentially approved at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Once they hear all the facts and make a decision.
Okay, and I guess my only question is, just the, the understanding of the, um, the difference, depending on how far you go to the property line on the side, so we added the extra six inches to try to keep it within that eighteen inches that you had mentioned when we, when I asked before, if we went further than that, you said it was a more complicated process, what is that?
That takes it out of the summary category.
I see, so if we, you know, Mr. O'Brien just said, you know, if we went a foot clo- you know, if we, if we went wider this way and shorter this way, um, so that, that would still be something we could do at the next meeting, in other words, it's just.
Right, it'd be a whole new petition.
This part of it versus the beginning, okay, so that's what we'd like to do.
So you're, you're requesting continuance?
I'm requesting a continuance, yes.
So we're gonna continue this till October twenty-second?
Great.
Thank you for coming in tonight and helping out.
Thank you.
Next case is John and Mary Ann Emanuel.
Petition of John and Mary Ann Emanuel owners for a variance from Sections six oh three, seven oh one, and eight oh three G to allow a twenty-eight point five times thirteen point five shed addition at the rear of the dwelling with a right-side setback of seven feet, where fifteen feet is required, and a rear setback of five feet, where thirty feet is required, resulting in a lot coverage of twenty-seven point five percent, where twenty-five percent is allowed. Said real estate is located at sixty-eight Crest, and further identified as Lot one fifty-nine A on Tax Assessor's Platte, one sixteen Northeast.
Raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony this evening, it'll be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Uh, Charles Mueller, five thirty-two Kinsley Avenue, Unit five oh two, Providence, Rhode Island.
Okay, tell us about your petition.
Uh, so this is my father-in-law's petition, uh, he wanted to put a shed in, and I guess he'd planned this, or thought of this many years ago, and he was gonna, I don't know where he originally wanted to put it on the property, but with the advent of solar panels, he'd sort of designed this one shed, I think, if I look at the drawings, the original was maybe two thousand seven, so now he wants to make it even wa- bit wider, so he can have a, extend the roof and have panels over it and create some coverage for, you know, lawn chairs and stuff like that, and then I guess his rationale for putting it off to one side is so it's at the southern end of the property, uh, and while still keeping the main part of the yard open. I don't know if you have all of this stuff, I do have one copy of the drawing.
No, I think we have everything here.
So the shed's gonna be used to store, uh.
I mean, probably mostly my surfboards, to be honest. I mean, you know, there's nieces and nephews, so there's more stuff around the house, um.
And the reason for the size of the roof is to put additional solar panels?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's just potentially, but is he committed to putting the solar up, or this is just in case he wants to down the road?
Uh, I, I, uh, you know, I can't speak, but my speculation is that he might not do the project if, if.
Right.
Doesn't do the solar, I mean, he's always wanted the, uh, the shed, but, you know, it was, that's his goal.
Yeah, he maximized roof area for future possible solar panels.
Yeah, okay.
On this, uh, plot, the, the big plan, it doesn't show the shed on there, does it?
No.
No.
Oh, I have one that does, maybe it's in pencil, I didn't realize it wasn't copied, would you like to see that?
Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, if you can submit that as well.
That's okay, I'd just like to see it.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to see where it is, that's all.
Let's just pass it, we will. Has your father-in-law spoke to the neighbors, are there anyone?
Yeah, he spoke to the neighbors, the property to the east has a big, there's already a big line of trees, um, on their property, so it's part of the reason he wants to move it to the south end, so it would still get sun, um, there, I believe to the south is a, uh, is a rental property, and the, there's no problem there, and the neighbor, I don't know if he heard from the neighbors to the north, but I do know the other two, because I was privy to those conversations.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Can you just kind of paint a picture for me, you enter on Crest Street, on the left side, the garage's on the left side.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you get to the shed in the back, and you drive back there, you carrying everything back there?
Yeah, there's between the, um, garage and the house, there's actually a hall, uh, the, you know, house attaches to the garage, and you can walk under, so you know, it's, you know, so you br- bring stuff directly, you know, between the houses and in the backyard.
And this, this was the location you picked because, I'm just curious.
Yeah, to, to maximize the sun, really, for the roof.
To maximize the sun.
And, you know, keep, keep the, you know, the, the main part of the lawn open, and that part of the lawn is a little bit wetter too, so you end up not using it as much.
So it's being attached to the house, is that correct?
No, thi- this will not be attached to the house.
It's not attached to the house, okay.
And you don't have any solar panels on the current house or on the current garage?
No.
Right now?
The roofline for the garage is conducive to panels, but the main part of the house is not as such.
So as I'm looking at it, and I apologize if I'm looking at it from the wrong direction, but it's extending toward the back of the property, so one of the exhibits, one of the plans that was given to us was this one here, so.
Yeah.
As you're looking at this, the house is on this side, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So they moved the shed closer to the back of the property, as opposed to putting the shed next to the house and extending the roofline, the extended roofline toward the property, right?
Uh, yeah.
And then what was the reason for, for putting the shed on that side of this rectangular structure?
Uh, that, I don't have the answer, I'm sorry, I, you know, do I think that that matters, probably ultimately not, I think that might have been not, that might have just been arbitrary the way it was drawn, I don't have, but I don't know.
There, there's, there's no interest in turning this into living space at any point?
No, so.
That, that could be a condition of this, that it's a shed and it's not a living space?
Absolutely.
Any other question?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I re- I recall when I met with Mr. Emanuel several months ago, but he demonstrated that this was to be attached. He said the building has a, has an additional, but he said it was not attached.
Uh, if, if that's the case, then I apologize, I was misinformed.
Attached to the rear of the building, that's why the thirty-foot setback.
Right.
Otherwise, an accessory structure detached, it would have been allowed to be within ten feet of the property line, so by having it attached, even though it's still an accessory, it becomes part of that principal building, so if that setback increases to thirty feet, so really, if this thing was separate, we, we had talked back and forth about it too, that if it was to be detached, he would have had to move it a minimum of ten feet away from the principal structure, which made it almost impossible to build it.
Right.
So that's part of how it got to this, um, my apologies if this is not a sightline for you to look at.
No, we, we have this now.
Do you have that one?
Yeah, he gave us this as Exhibit A.
But that, that was the reasoning for that, it's attached to the back, so that he didn't have to maintain a ten-foot separation.
And we're, we're okay, because it's attached, still saying it's just gonna be storage and not living space.
Oh, yes, that it's still an accessory.
Right, it's still accessory.
The ordinance says that an accessory building has to be separated from the principal structure by ten feet, unless it is structurally attached there too.
Okay.
But at that point, it becomes part of the principal building, so it increases the required setback from ten feet to thirty. That's what's driving a lot of the need for the relief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kane.
So, so, Mr. Kane, and this was and I apologize, this, this copy with the front elevation shown and without the extension is dated a while ago, five of seventeen, and this one with the extended roofline, you're saying this actually attaches to the existing house?
That's correct.
So the shed has just been maybe what was originally proposed back in the day, but the shed is going this way toward the property, and this is a relief that we're looking for.
Right, and that's the way he presented it to me, was that.
Okay.
He wanted to be able to increase the roof space to make it viable to put the solar panels.
Right.
This has been going on since, I think, two thousand seventeen.
Sure. And the solution was to just move the shed further into the back of the property.
And then infill it with that.
And fill it with the roofline, instead of put the shed where it was and putting the roofline toward the back.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Might I have a, a motion? Is there a motion to accept the petition?
Mister Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the variance and add the proviso that the shed is for storage only and not to be used as a living space.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Made in second, discussion?
Well, my, my personal issue on this one is that I, I don't think this is the least relief necessary to increase your storing capacity on a somewhat oddly shaped lot. If he didn't have the extended overhanging roof for the potential use of solar panels down the road, which, looking at this, is about the full length of the shed itself, correct? The dimensions on that look like the extended roofline is the actual full length of the shed structure on top of it. And I, I, for the potential use of a, a solar panel down the road, to me, isn't a minimum relief requested in order to, to, to meet what I think the applicant's looking to get with the storage area.
Other discussion?
I'd say as far as the lot is concerned, I think the seeking of relief in terms of the unique, uh, shape of the lot, since it is wider than it is deep, that I think the direction he's going is, is about his only choice. And as was mentioned, the reason why he's attached it to the building at all is, is that is the, the only way that, within reason, he could have an additional structure put up and, and not have to ask for additional variances or special, uh, variances in this case. So I think he is asking for the lea- least relief based on the unique, uh, character, six of the lot.
Any other discussion?
I, I'm just, I'm reading that it's only, it's under ten feet tall, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think it's the least, least, uh, relief necessary as well to gain the storage he wants. And looking at the increase in lot coverage, it's, it's nominal, it's, it's not having any impact on, uh, the adjacent homes. And it's never going to be living space. It's, it's a glorified shed that, that doesn't meet setbacks.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So, motion passes four to one. Do you wanna take a quick break, or you wanna go right into the next one?
Petition of Brian T. Holland and Carrie Holland, owners by their attorney Gerard A. Galvin Esquire, for a variance from section six oh three, seven oh one, seven oh three, and eight oh two B, to allow a shed with a side yard setback of point, uh, six feet, where fifteen feet is required, and a rear yard setback of two point nine feet, where ten feet is required, resulting in a lot coverage of thirty-three point eight percent, where twenty-five percent is allowed. Said real estate is located at Eight Tuckerman Ave. and further identified as Lot One Twenty-Five on Tax Assessor's Plaid, One Sixteen Northeast.
Council Regan, uh, where is this located on Tuckerman?
North, you know, fairly close to Purgatory. Uh, I, I believe you may have been on...
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe I was, I didn't, I, I probably got it, and maybe I got it confused with Donovan's.
This, this, the list attached to your application should be...
I will tell you in one second.
Yeah, come on here.
Yep, you're recusing. Mister Silvery, you'll be voting on this?
Good evening, Mister Chair, members of the zoning board. My name is Gerard Galvin of Galvin Law in Newport, Rhode Island. I'm here representing Brian and Carrie Holland on the petition just announced. And the petition is for them to, uh, keep the shed that is currently standing in their backyard. It does require the relief on lot coverage and in the rear and side yard setbacks. I have Carrie Holland here to testify about her need for the relief, and also Jim Hool, who will speak about whether the petition meets the criteria for the variance. There's also several letters of support from immediate abutters, uh, that, those letters were filed with the petition. I believe there's also another, uh, a butter here in support of the petition tonight. Um, if you've reviewed the petition, you've seen that at the beginning of this year, uh, this lot had lot coverage of, uh, just about fifty-seven percent. Uh, there was a seven hundred fifty-six square foot garage in the northeast portion of the lot, and a seven hundred fifty square foot concrete raised patio with a, uh, roof overhang. And in between those, there was concrete. Uh, the Hollands bought this property in two thousand twelve, and, uh, they have four young children. They had discussed wanting to have some green space in their backyard, uh, for themselves, and they began a project, uh, designed to remove those structures and replace it with a more moderately sized shed for their bikes and beach, beach equipment. They applied to the town for a demolition permit, they received that. They spoke with a contractor who, uh, represented to them that, uh, the shed did not require any, uh, relief from the town, and they put this new shed up of a, just under two hundred fifty square feet, after removing, uh, all those other structures. Uh, the town then observed the shed, uh, and noted that there had not been a request for, uh, the setback relief and the lot coverage relief, uh, prior to the demolition. And the town issued a violation based on that. Mister Kane has graciously allowed us the opportunity to file a petition to seek your blessing for the shed that is standing there. And we believe we will meet the criteria for the variance, and we believe this is a, a true improvement to the property and also to the neighborhood. And, you know, the, my clients have learned an important lesson in this process, but I think you'll see that there was never any intent to try to shirk obligations or skirt the process, or to achieve something that was unlikely for them to be, uh, approved. They just weren't aware that they needed the permission. So we hope that we can present to you the evidence tonight, and you'll see that there's no need to, to punish what we believe was an innocent mistake, uh, but rather you can approve the shed that is standing there. So with that, unless you have questions for me at this point, I'll call Carrie Holland, uh, for some testimony.
Okay.
Miss Holland?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth, another about the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Carrie Holland, and my address is forty-two Highland Lane in Milton during the school year and at Eight Tuckerman Ave. Sure, sure. My address, forty-two Highland Lane in Milton, Massachusetts during the school year, and at Eight Tuckerman Ave in Middletown in the summer.
And, uh, Ms. Holland, you're married to Brian Holland, correct?
Correct.
And you have children?
Yes.
How many?
I have four children.
How old are they?
Eight, six, four, and two.
Okay. And, uh, you purchased Eight Tuckerman with Brian in two thousand twelve, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you describe the condition of that, uh, property when you purchased it?
Um, yes, I'd say the property was very outdated, um, at the time. I'm just speaking directly to the exterior. It was, um, you know, concrete on the walkway leading to the backyard, a big oversized, somewhat rotting garage with, uh, cabanas trailing the side and the rear. And then where the ground was, was all concrete with varying elevations up to a, a raised concrete patio that had a brick fireplace and, um, a very old grill that had been built, I believe, in the sixties. With an overhang that, at the time, had, um, you know, just needed a lot of repair.
Okay. If I can submit, uh, petitioners, is there one?
Yep. Okay, we're gonna label this Exhibit One.
And Ms. Holland, I'm gonna show you a picture now. Do you recognize that?
Yes.
What is that?
Uh, this is the concrete raised patio that was in the, the far right corner of our backyard.
Okay. And that structure remained in the back corner of your, uh, yard until earlier this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And now, I'd also like to show you this picture. What is this picture? Mister Chair, if I may, I've passed this out to the petitioners, too. These voters are also in your package, but just so we know, if the petitioner can walk us through this, we'll go.
So this is the garage in the, on the left far side of our property that was there when we purchased the home.
Okay, and that was also there until earlier this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what does this photo depict? Mister Chair, this is the petitioners' two.
Looks like the rear, the, um, bird's eye view of our home when we purchased it.
Now, uh, this is a little cut off, uh, but this is just to show you how many structures existed on this property as of earlier this year. The white roof you see there on the left-hand side of the photograph, what is that?
This is the house. So that was the concrete raised patio overhang.
Okay. And, uh, further left, yes.
And to the left of that was the original garage.
Okay. And there was no grass between those structures at all?
No.
Okay. Now, at some point, you and your husband discussed, uh, attempting to rehabilitate that backyard, correct?
Correct.
When did you start, uh, those discussions?
When we purchased it, we've always had in mind that something needed to be done about the backyard. Uh, but it wasn't until last summer that we thought something needs to be done urgently.
Okay. And did you discuss that desire with your neighbors in the area?
We did discuss it with all three of our adjacent neighbors and also neighbors across the street on Tuck, the Tuckerman Esplanade side.
And did those discussions with your neighbors always contemplate, uh, having some type of storage structure in the yard?
They did.
Okay. And how did those discussions with your neighbors go?
Every neighbor that we spoke with was in full support of us addressing the backyard, and we have support letters to support that.
Okay. And did you or he discuss the need to come into the, the zoning board? Did you, were you aware of that obligation when you were discussing this project?
We set out with the intention of improving the aesthetic of, of our yard for ourselves and for our neighbor, for our neighbors and for the town. And never did I envision myself standing here and defending this. I, we did not know that this was needed.
And had you known, you would've applied in advance, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And when you spoke with the manufacturer for the shed, did he in fact represent that you didn't need any relief for this?
He did.
Okay. Now, so the shed, you went ahead and installed the shed this spring, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'd like to, um, ask you to, if you recognize this photograph, to...
Yes, I recognize the photograph. This is...
What is that?
This is the bird's eye view of our house and backyard as it currently stands.
Okay, so all of that concrete and those structures have been removed and replaced with the shed, and there is a little, uh, remaining image on the bottom of that photograph. Do you know what that depicts?
Uh, that's our neighbor's shed.
Okay. And we just removed the rest of their property to not, um, put them, you know, images of their property at this point, um, in front of the board. But the shed you put in abuts directly against your neighbor's shed, correct?
It does.
Okay. Now, the house, uh, Eight Tuckerman, do you have any basement in that house?
No.
Is there any attic in that house?
No.
Is there any other meaningful storage in the house?
No.
Can you describe, uh, your storage needs for yourself, your husband, and your four young children?
Yeah, so I'd just like to add a little color here, um, just share what the shed represents to our family. Again, I have four children, they're very small. And what initially attracted us to this neighborhood was the proximity to the beach and the recreational biking and surfing opportunities. So in our shed, we have a beach cart that we fill with beach chairs, beach toys, coolers to take to the entrance on Esplanade. Uh, we have six bikes, a stroller, we have two bike trailers, a small kiddie pool, um, sprinkler, paddleboard, boogie boards, like us, water table. We have two coolers, we store our lawn equipment back there and, and sporting equipment. We have eight beach chairs, two folding tables, and four chairs in our shed. So a smaller shed just would not have met our needs. So as it stands, we've really maxed out our storage space. We're just, we're a very, very active family and on the move. So we bike as a family around Equidneck Island to the beaches, parks, the aquarium, coffee shops, and playgrounds. And we, um, as Mister Galvin has mentioned, we have no attic or basement. So what our shed represents to us is just a ta- like a tangible, you know, version of what makes our summer in Middletown special. So we feel that owning this home with any less storage space would have a negative impact on our family's lifestyle and would be considered a hardship.
Now, uh, just to be, uh, clear, I heard the concern raised by this board before, there's no intention to, uh, turn that shed into any type of living space or earn any type of income off of rentals from that space, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And you don't expect to gain any type of financial gain through this shed, correct?
No.
Okay. All right, uh...
Mister Galvin, what's the shed made out of?
Uh, the shed is made out of, there is, um, there are plans in your petition. How do I put a shed on a, uh, material?
Because my, my, you know, I, I don't disagree that you need a shed. And it's unfortunate that the neighbor has their shed where they do, but if it's made out of wood, how long's the wood gonna last? And how do you maintain a shed that's backed up to another shed? It looks like there's, you know, maybe a full space between it. So, did the shed manufacturer have a, a, a plan for that?
Well, it's in, in terms of maintenance in the future?
Yeah.
I don't have the answer to what the...
Mister Chairman, if I may, I mean, this evidence just got put in the record and I hadn't seen. I didn't really notice how close that was to the adjacent property line. Well, not to the line, but to the shed on the other side of the property line. That brings in some code requirements for separation between buildings.
That's what I think.
Without, uh, proper fire-resistant type construction or proper separation. Normally, any buildings, if they're within five feet of each other, they have to be fire-resistant construction. So, which is an application of either a fiber board type of siding or something that's, that's considered non-combustible, so...
Okay.
Before the board goes any further with this, um, and again, this was nev- there was never a building permit application.
Right.
So there was never a code analysis done of this, it was a, and after the fact, the shed was built without a permit. So I think if you were to grant the relief for it to be this close at this time, I don't think I could issue a building permit.
No.
Without a substantial alteration to what they've already done.
Do you understand the point, Mister Galvin?
I understand the point. Uh, I think what I would request is the opportunity to try to address this without... to address this without taking further action on the shed or on the violation, look into these issues and try to come up with a solution that we can present to the board, present to Mr. Kane, and I suppose continue this matter.
Yeah, 'cause I think, I think the testimony so far has been fine, but just the proximity to that building and the proximity to the property line, you know, creates an issue that maybe there's a, you know, working with Mr. Kane, you can figure out a way that it works.
Right.
But as it, as it sits out, the Donovan's who were here earlier, you know, when they originally put their plan, it was so close to the property line, now a thirty-foot tall building's a lot harder to maintain with a three-foot.
Right.
You know, but even a one-story building with twelve inches of, I couldn't get in and paint it.
No, understood, the painting and that type of maintenance is a big issue, I think the placement there was intended to obviously preserve as much yard space, but also it was replacing tremendous lot coverage and overhangs that existed right there.
Agreed.
And so they, they were just trying to tuck it away where there had been a much larger structure. If there are permitting issues that need to be addressed, we will do our best to address those.
Would you, would you like to continue then to our number?
I, I think, I think that's probably what we need to do at this point, and hopefully we can address these issues and come back before you. Now, I don't know whether that's something we can do for ten twenty-two, we can try.
I think we can.
Okay, all right, so if we can put it on for ten twenty-two, is that okay with you?
Yes.
We'll continue the matter until ten twenty-two.
Okay.
And we're gonna take a short recess before we hear our next.
All right.
Continue.
Call the meeting back to order. Next petition, Mr. Heaney.
Petition of Francine Newt owner for a variance from sections six oh three, seven oh one, and eight oh three G to construct a thirteen by seventeen, one-story addition with a front yard setback of eight feet where twenty-five feet is required. Said real estate is located at thirty-nine Continental Drive and further identified as lot forty-eight A on Tax Assessor's Platte, one fourteen.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Francine Newt, thirty-nine Continental Drive.
Tell us about your petition, Ms. Newt.
Ms. Chairman, just for the record, that there was a typo there that said three foot by seventeen foot, not thirteen foot.
Three foot by seventeen.
It's only a thirteen, a three-foot wide addition, not thirteen.
It's basically a bump out to the side of the house. So first of all, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for reviewing my petition. I do have some additional facts to offer. The house is built, was built in nineteen hundred, so it is an existing non-conforming residential structure with an eight-foot front yard setback, which has been there for all these years. It is an eight-hundred-square-foot house. I am adding to the back to make it, you know, a little bit more livable than eight-hundred square feet. The addition that I'm requesting in this petition is, as Mr. Cade stated, is for a three-feet-by-seventeen extension to the south side, which is pictured in, in the picture that you have, in the elevation that you have. The front elevation, if you look at the front elevation, you see the front door, you go to the left, and you see a sort of a blank space after the windows, and that's where the kitchen is. So I needed to have three more feet there to make sure that my refrigerator would fit in the kitchen and not in the living room. And also, I'm making renovations to improve the house, which some of the neighbors that I've spoken with really like. I'm connecting to the sewers tomorrow. So it's just an addition, it's a fifty-one-square-foot addition to the kitchen is what the petition is requiring or requesting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Ms. Newt.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Come forward. Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Vera Reed, twenty-seven Concord Drive, two houses down around the corner.
Okay.
Yep. The letter that we received had a mistake, it was at a thirteen by seven. So, and that we, that was confusing, because we drive by, there's only two ways to get into Continental Village.
Right.
Off Green End down Continental or from Valley up. And we always come in the off Green End at the Continental Drive. So we couldn't understand from what was written, okay? But I've just spoken with Francine and even before that. The possibility to make that an absolutely adorable house, and I can see now that that's what she's going to do.
Okay, so you're supporting the petition?
Yep, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here tonight would like to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the application?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, it's three feet, and from what I'm seeing, it's just basically coming off the existing home, which, which is already deficient. It's already eight feet from the road, so to match it up, it's, it's reasonable. It's a hardship, or it's due to the nature of the way the house is built.
Yeah, I too am going to support it. I, you know, when you look at it, on the drawing, it's, it is where it is, I mean, and where the kitchen already exists, so I think it's a reasonable request for the full enjoyment of the property. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Petition of Thomas McGrath owner for a variance from sections six oh three, seven oh one, and eight oh three G to allow a twenty-six by forty-eight, twenty-six foot by forty-eight foot, one-story addition, and a sixteen foot by twenty-six deck with a left-side setback of four feet where twenty feet is required, and a lot coverage of twenty-four percent where twenty percent is allowed. Said real estate is located at two ninety-nine Offland Lane and further identified as lot thirty-two on Tax Assessor's Platte, one twelve.
You can raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Thomas McGrath, two ninety-nine Offland Lane.
Okay, Mr. McGrath, tell us about your petition.
The house as it stands right now is only about four hundred and twenty-two square feet after I take off partial of the back of the house. My partner and I would like to sell her house and move over to my property. This property is now being, the residential home has been there since, God, probably in the thirties, but I purchased it in nineteen eighty, and it was under light, light manufacturing, the zoning was. So I'm able to run my business there, I'm in the construction business, I'm a cabinet maker. So you'll see the existing building on the west side of the property is my workshop. So now what I'm wanting to do is to extend the house to make it more livable by adding about eleven hundred square feet to it, which should bring the whole house to somewhere around fifteen, sixteen hundred square foot. We want it all on one floor, so that's why I'm not going up, you know, a smaller addition with a second floor, because we're, I'm done with stairs, if I can, if I can help it, so. And also, I'm trying to, as you can see in the picture, I'm actually trying to bring the house closer to the swimming pool and whatnot, so we don't have to walk so far. When I, when I put the pool in, the, I put the pool far enough away from the house to facilitate putting an addition on at some point in time. But for the past twenty years, I've been living in the, you know, in my, in my partner's house, so, and I only work here. So now we're actually moving over there. It's just becoming too, too expensive to take care of two properties, is basically what it boils down to.
And so, Mr. Kane, we're only hearing a special use permit on this, correct?
I'm sorry, you have a variance also.
Yeah, just two.
Specific to the special use, it's only because it's industrial?
It's all because he's got the non-conforming mixed residential and commercial.
Right, okay.
So it's expansion of a non-conforming use.
And do we hear, which ca, which, which petition do we hear first, the variance or the?
We can hear them concurrently, it's the matter of the vote, has to be, I believe, the variance first.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why isn't that expansion of a non-conforming use if the expansion is on the residential property?
Because the mixed use and mixed residential and commercial uses are not allowed under the ordinance, so that renders it a non-conforming use.
Do I need to read the special use, and I didn't read it yet?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you would need to do that.
Petition of Thomas McGrath owner for a special use permit from sections eight oh three A to allow the expansion of a non-conforming mixed residential and commercial use by constructing an addition on the residential structure. Said real estate is located at two ninety-nine Offland Lane and further identified as lot thirty-two on Tax Assessor's Platte, one twelve.
Okay. Any, any questions for the petitioner?
So the entire thing abuts the tradesman's center?
Yes.
Your neighbors essentially are doing things over there?
Yeah, there's nothing on that side at all, so, and everything else meets the setbacks.
And Mr. McGrath, I know I should know this, how wide is your lot?
In the front, it's only seventy feet wide, and in the rear, it's only fifty. So one side, you can see, kind of see the, it just kind of, both sides kind of come in on itself a little bit towards the back, but about, you know, about in the middle of the lot where the swimming pool is, is about sixty-five feet wide, so.
So yeah, your, your variance are due to the characteristics of the lot, really?
Yes, exactly, yeah. As a matter of fact, if you look at the thing, you'll see that I'm actually going to, the house maintains a four-foot, it's actually four foot seven to the house, and then there's a deck, and then it goes to four foot one at the end of the deck. Well, we're actually ripping the deck off, but we're still going to move the house addition over, so we maintain that four foot one all the way to the back of the house, right? It's hard to see, I, I think you only have this size, this size of the plan.
I have the big one.
Is that the size that you have, or bigger one than this? It's hard to see, but it's in here, that they're moving it over, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. McGrath? I think we're good, Mr. McGrath.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion on the variance first?
Motion to approve the variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion? I'm going to support the petition. The, the nature of the lot and how, how it's currently configured, there's absolutely no way he, he would be able to build onto his house without, without being in the setbacks. I think it's a reasonable request, and I'm going to support it for that reason. I think the variances are necessary for the full enjoyment of the property. Any other discussion?
I'm also going to support, I think that the applicant's decision to actually move the addition slightly more in toward the center to maintain what he, what is now the four foot, one inch, it would have been easier just to extend the property, I mean, the structure right off your existing house, but by shifting it over that little bit, to me indicates that you're doing all you can to, to meet the unique characteristics of your property, so I'm planning to support it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'd like to get a motion on the special use permit.
Motion to approve the special use permit.
Motion made, do I have a second?
I have a second. Second.
Okay, we got it tied, I goes to Mr. Heaney. Motion made in second, discussion? You know, it's a special use permit only, only because of the, the dual use. I think it's, there's not really a change in what's going on in the property. I think it's just a requirement that we issue the special use, there's not going to be any diminution of property value because of the use. It's not going to be a hazard to public health, and I, and I think it's in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So I'm going to support Mr. McGrath's special use permit. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you. See you, Jack.
Next petition, Mr. Heaney.
Petition of J O J F LLC by their attorney, David P. Martland Esquire, for a variance from section six oh three to allow the subdivision of a lot, of lot two forty-two into two lots, with one lot having lot frontage width of forty-six feet, forty-six point six feet of frontage where one twenty, one hundred and twenty feet is required. Said real estate is located at five twenty-seven Aquinic Avenue and further identified as lot two forty-two on Tax Assessor's Platte, one fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Martland on behalf of J O J F, the applicant and owner of the property. This is a, a property located on Aquinic Avenue at five twenty-seven, which is on the east side of Aquinic. As you come up the hill and you pass by Prospect, and it's almost the cross from where Ocean View Drive is across the street, there's an existing single-family residence on the property. The property itself is fairly, fairly large. The existing property is fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-three square feet. It's located in an R twenty zone, so twenty thousand square feet's required for, for a, a single-family lot. And, you know, it's a, it's a basic, you know, sort of garden variety frontage request here to seek a two-lot subdivision. There isn't sufficient frontage to meet the hundred and twenty-foot requirement for each lot. We can meet a hundred and twenty for one, and then we have forty-six feet for the, the second lot, which is narrowly large enough for a roadway, forty-six feet, but. And the, the proposal is that would also be a single-family house lot. It's going to be serviced by sewer, which is located in Aquinic. There is no water, however, in that portion of Aquinic, oddly enough. So it will be serviced by a well. We submitted this petition to the planning board a few months ago. The planning board conducted a site visit to review the site and the surrounding area. The, and then we, we had two hearings before the board. At the first hearing that we had, there was a direct abut to the east, Mr. Santos had come, and he, he had raised an issue and concern that he wanted some, some screening back there. So we amended the, the plan to provide for some arboretum screening, and that's on the plan that's submitted to, to the board. So that, that was as the request of, of the abut to the rear. And also at that time, the initial proposal was to utilize the existing driveway and existing curb cut. There were members of the planning board that thought the, the location would be better suited moving it to the south, and so that the location would, would require a new curb cut on the, the lot to be carved out. So we continued that matter and revised the plans accordingly to provide for that. I've got the, the decisions from the, from the planning board dated August twenty-eighth, if I may approach and provide copies of this to the board.
We're going to mark this Exhibit A. So, Mr. Martland, your original plan was to, to have a shared driveway, and the planning board thought it was better to have two?
No, actually, it will still be, it'll be, it's still a shared driveway, but a relocated entrance.
Okay.
Okay.
I see.
A curb cut. So the, the, the one to the north will be closed.
I got you.
And there were some trees there that they wanted to maintain, and so I believe that was a, a condition as well. The, because Aquinic Avenue is, is a state road, it does require a DOT permit for that curb cut, and so we'll have to file with DOT prior to any final plan approval, should we get approval this evening, but that, that is subject to their, their purview. Additionally, Aquinic Avenue is a traffic-sensitive district, and so that, that is another reason why we would, we're having a shared driveway, so that you don't create multiple curb cuts on, on a lot.
That curb cut looks like it's too late, just for safety, is that correct?
No, it's, it's, it's twelve feet wide. Yeah. And it, it flares out to provide the appropriate turning radius, and it, it shows the connection into the sewer there as well. So the planning board had provided a conditional approval, conditioned on coming before this board to request the, the variance. I believe that this is the, the least variance necessary, because we provide a hundred and twenty feet on, on the one lot, and we can only provide forty-six on the second lot, but if you look at the lot, I mean, it's still, it's still going to be in excess of thirty, it's, it's like thirty thousand square feet for, for the new lot. So from a density perspective, you're maintaining the appropriate density for the R twenty district. So it's, in, in that sense, in keeping with the Cobb Plan, in keeping with the zoning regulations in, in relation to that. I do have Mr. LaRusso with me as the principal from J O J F to answer any questions. The board might have, but I, I thought with the, the planning board decision and the plans, and the board's knowledge of this area, that was probably sufficient with respect to a review of a frontage application.
The DOT looks at the traffic, right? The curb cut?
Yeah, the DOT.
That seems super dangerous to me, but I, I don't think we're here to judge that, right?
No.
So everything we approved tonight will be pursuant to, will we continue upon the planning, planning board's recommendations?
Yeah, it would be, you would have to adopt, I, I think, all of the conditions laid out by the planning board in the, in those six conditions that they were proposing.
Right, because the one that jumps out is always an issue is the stormwater management. So that, that will be taken care of once we make the approval, they'll, they'll comply?
Yeah, at the time, and, and, Mr. Kane, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but at the time of the application of the building permit, there will be a stormwater management, sedimentation control plan that needs to be submitted and approved by both his office, as well as the town engineer and the Public Works. The, there'll be additional review, because we'd need a sewer permit through Public Works to connect into the, into that sewer, so that'll be reviewed. It'll also get reviewed by DOT, because we're going into the, the state roadway, so there'll be a, a, a number of levels of review on, on those stormwater issues.
And the easement will be permanent?
Yeah, so there would be a permanent easement imposed across the, the lot being created for that access, and also cross easements for the utilities.
And those, when it goes back to the planning board, they'll have to provide those, and my office will review them.
That's right. But it looks to me like the easement's going to be for the existing property from the new property, the way this is drawn. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's just, that's a little different, but that's, I'm sure that's fine.
Can I ask a question, since we're all sitting here right now? Been here three or four years, we've had a bunch of meetings here, where we've talked about stormwater probably for about a hundred hours. So are we not doing that anymore, which is fine with me, or is this a different type of situation?
An individual lot is subject to the permitting requirements under our stormwater and pollution prevention control ordinance, which is essentially known as soil erosion. So prior to getting a building permit, they have to be able to demonstrate that they can manage the stormwater.
Whereas like, what about, what about a hotel, when we sit here with the engineers of command?
It's a, it's a different criteria, because that also falls under a RITD's permit from DOT, and has a whole different set of requirements. The, the, our stormwater may basically outlines requirements for single-family dwellings, and so we handle that on a, it's a much smaller scale.
But when he comes and presents a hotel, he, Attorney Martland, is it necessary for you to show us the stormwater plan for hotels?
Well, I, I think because it's a special use permit.
It, it is, just because you're, you are, one of the things that, that the zoning board does, in addition to approving the special use permits or variance requests, is you are ultimately the permitting authority for the development plan review process. So a lot of that happens at the planning board and at the technical review committee, but ultimately that comes before you, and you are the group that signs off on the final approval of that development plan review, a large portion of which is the stormwater and engineering, so. So it is appropriate to do it in that case.
And also, with some of those, those other applications, we may be in a different watershed zone.
Right.
That may also impact the testimony that's necessary.
So these lots that are being configured will not have restrictions based on, they're not going to be back in two months for zoning relief for setbacks, are they?
No, there's substantial building area here. And just from a stormwater situation, thi, this is conceptual, but the, the engineer, Tom Principi, was showing on this particular plan how you can handle that stormwater on-site, and so it would be, be through the, the use of swales and, and sort of low-impact designed detention basin to, so that you don't increase the, the rate or volume of runoff.
And just to be clear, I think you just mentioned this, that the proposal, in terms of the new building site, will not require any kind of variances as currently drawn?
That's correct, yeah. And, you know, I, I don't think we could come back and request a, a variance, because you essentially would have created your own hardship in relation to, to the lot you created, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Martland? I think we're good, David.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Suzie, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bacon.
Do we have to make the motion subject to these?
I think we do, so, want to amend your?
Motion to approve the application, subject to the recommendations by the planning board, there's six of them.
Dated August twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Mr. Bacon, do you second it?
I second.
Discussion?
There's, there's a shortage of frontage. Otherwise, the two lots have a huge amount of building footprint area. It's an R twenty. There's fifty-three thousand square feet of, of building area, where, where forty is necessary. It's reasonable. It's, so I'm going to approve the application.
Any other comments? I'm going to, I, it's rare that we get a planning board decision that's unanimous, so it's nice when we do. I, I think the planning board did a great job in reviewing the plan. Subject to the, the conditions within this, I think it's a, a great use of the property, so I too am going to support it.
I think it's worth noting that the hardship here is the lack of frontage, and not, as was just pointed out, the ample square feet for the two dwellings, so I think it's definitely due to the unique characteristic of the property.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Maybe we have one more.
Petition of William J. and Elizabeth Gill, owners, by their attorney, David P. Martland Esquire, for a variance from section six oh three to allow the subdivision of lot thirteen into two lots, with proposed parcel A having ninety-two point four-nine feet of frontage, where one hundred and twenty feet is required, and parcel B having twenty point zero-nine feet of frontage, where one hundred and twenty feet is required. Said real estate is located at one six six nine West Main Road, and further identified as lot thirteen on Tax Assessor's Platte, one eleven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Martland, on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Gill. This is, I guess, a redo of a petition from ten years ago. This, this particular property is fully developed, it's got two existing dwellings on it. Approximately ten years ago, the Gills received planning and zoning approval to subdivide the property, so that there was one house on each lot. The, they were thinking at that time, they were going to be selling one of the, the homes to their son. That didn't occur, they, and we didn't go forward with recording the plan at that point. Now their, their son's ready to, to, to move on and, and acquire one of the properties, and we're just essentially looking to reinstate the relief that was previously granted on this property. The only thing that has changed since then, back then, this was an R twenty zone, and today it's an R ten zone. And so each of these resulting lots is still going to be over the ten thousand square-foot limit. There's no additional proposed development occurring. There'll be the same access off of what's known as Thelma Lane, which isn't actually a, a real road, but there, it's got access at the traffic light directly across from So this is to essentially just carve the property up, so that we'd have one, one parcel on each lot without any further development. Received the preliminary planning board approval, conditioned on, on the zoning board approval last month, and-
So, do we, I didn't see the planning board approval in the packet. Do we have that?
Um, no.
I don't believe they forwarded it to us yet.
So would we approve it conditioned on that, or do we have to wait for that, Mr. Kane?
You have to go back one more time, right, to planning?
Oh, yeah, I, I do have to go back to planning after. So you get, you get your preliminary approval, condition on zoning, you come to zoning, if you get your zoning approval, then you're going to go back to planning for final approval, so.
So your approval will essentially enable the planning board to give a final?
Makes no sense, but.
That's the state law.
What year was this originally approved?
This was like ten years ago, like two thousand eight, I think, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, around that time.
And they're doing this because they're going to sell the, the lot to-
Yeah, they're going to transfer the, the front lot to their son.
Okay.
And retain the, the rear lot. So it had been the plan ten years ago, and then they just weren't ready to do that, and and now they're, they're, they're ready to move forward. So right now, it's actually a non-conforming situation with two single families on one lot, and this will, at least from a use perspective, make it more conforming.
More conform, and it's, it's R ten, so it's fine.
That's right.
On the diagram, it doesn't show where soon, possibly soon to be parcel B. Where's its driveway? I can't, can't tell where it comes in. It come off of Thelma, as you mentioned. I don't see that.
Yeah, par- parcel B in the rear, that, does come in through, through Thelma, and the, it's got a garage sort of on the easterly side, and so you'd, you'd pass by the building to, to access that. Additionally, the, there's the, the development in the rear, the condo development that uses Thelma Lane as, as access.
So there's not going to be any more intensive usage, just the houses exist, we're just splitting off the two, the, the one piece and the two lots?
That's correct.
What is an existing traffic loop, loop easement?
Uh, there's i- i- an easement to the, to the state, to DOT, because there's the, the sensor loop there in order to trip the, the light to turn on, and because that's on private property, we're going to get granted easement to, to the state in case they need to come in.
Never saw that before, that's why I had to ask.
Yeah, you, it's, it's not usual.
Right, that's why I wanted to ask.
David, who owns Thelma Lane?
Uh, Will, Will and Libby own, own Thelma.
So is, is this partial to each property, so there must be a permanent easement there for the over fifty-five?
Right, so Thelma Lane, it, the, the paved area there is going to go with the rear lot.
Okay.
So the front lot will have access over that, through an access easement that will, would be recorded. There's a permanent access easement granted to the condo development over that.
Okay.
That front lot, though, has access from East Main, I mean, West Main, correct? If I recall, I've been, I've been to this property.
Yeah, I believe, I believe they do have an existing curb cut there.
And then it comes out and goes around the back of the front house and ties into Thelma, and it's like a circular driveway, but there is a curb, curb cut here for the existing dwelling, which is parcel A, closest to the road there. Yeah, okay.
Parcel B has an existing garage that obviously wouldn't beat setbacks if it was being built right now. That doesn't have to be cleaned up when you subdivide, you don't have to ask for-
It exists, it exists, so you're not, there's no change, there's no physical change on the ground, so the only issue here is the variance for the frontage.
And you did say the front lot, that front dwelling was going to be for the son, and the back dwelling is going to be just a rental property, or is it going to be for another? They have a couple-
Yeah, they, they, Will and Libby are going to retain the, the other property. They, they currently rent out both of the properties.
Yeah, because I know Will's sister lives in the front house. And I know that, unless they, unless they since moved, but, and Frank, her husband, works for Will, so I, that's why I know, I'm friends with them guys, but, yeah, that's, that's fine. I have no further questions.
Where does the twenty point zero-nine feet frontage for lot B, where is that?
If you, it, if you look at Thelma Lane-
Yeah.
At the intersection with West Main Road, that, that's the twenty point nine feet there. Can I?
So the actual roadway itself, because it's private, they can use it?
That's correct.
Okay.
That becomes part of their property?
Right, right.
That's right.
All right. I wasn't adding that in, so that's, that's, that makes sense.
And it's still considered private, even though it feeds this back of over fifty-five thing in the back? They gave an easement to there for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, so it's-
Okay, that makes sense.
Is, is lot A, that becomes a completely conforming lot, correct?
Lot A-
The front lot, is there anything that's non-conforming about it, once this happens? I don't think there is, just looking at it. Lot B has got some setback issues.
So lot A will have ninety-two point four-nine feet, so it'll be-
Other than that, right.
Seven and a half feet short of what's required.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Martland? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris Sousa, second by Mr. Bacon. Discussion?
Do we need to have any of the, the planning board's information in order to approve it, if they're going to approve it based upon our approval? That's how I understand the process. Are there any conditions that they put on this property that we should be aware of in terms of the, that's my only, only, only point I have.
I don't believe they put any conditions on it, just, this whole thing was done originally, I think, to help facilitate the development of the back lots, which is the Bailey Brook Condominium Association now.
Right.
So I, I think this is really truly just more of a housekeeping mechanism, in that they didn't record the original approved subdivision, so they're back here. I, I think it would be hard pressed to undo anything that's already been done. There are conditions on that easement-
Right.
-already, but this is really truly just creating two lot lines around two parcels, well, creating two parcels where one non-conforming parcel exists. I don't believe the planning board put any conditions on it, to my knowledge.
Well, you, you may want to just, for purposes of the motion, indicate subject to any conditions.
Motion to approve, subject to any conditions that the planning board put on the application.
Mr. Bacon, do you second that?
I do second it.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to approve, I'm going to support the petition based on the planning board's recommendations.
Conditions.
Conditions. I think it's, it's taking a, a non-conforming lot and making two conforming lots, which is always better than having the exception. My only, I just keep thinking of that one case where we had the people come back with the fence. We're not going to have anyone come back with our fences, are we, Mr. Martland? Never mind.
I'm, I'm not following.
That is mine.
Not alarmed.
Was I involved in that?
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting, eight twenty-four.
Anyone second it?
I second.
Adjourned.